To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to the public hearing orders.
Brian Garrison, Richard Trader, Dale Superd.
President.
We don't have a special speaker tonight, so we'll move next. I'll open the public hearing for the OKRA PFP grant. Public hearing is opened at 7:01 PM. I'd like to introduce Sean Kane for curbside to give a little bit of overview. Now, the Florida council discussion and public discussion.
We're here tonight to openly ask for information and input from the community. The city has decided to go for an OKRA grant. The grant is a CBBG and it is $239,217. It comes with a local match of $35,100 total. And the purpose of it is so that we can make this handicap accessible, the building here. It's for an elevator shaft, four cutouts, as well as a second floor area of refuge. If someone is handicapped and they're not able to get down due to the elevator, there's an area for them to have communication with the fire department, the police department, that type of thing, so that they have a safe area to be in until that time that someone can come up and get them and help them out. It will also have handicap accessible restrooms. There's going to be some ineligible expenses, and that is only because there is a second egress that is needed for the building to make it code compliant. Unfortunately, we can do the ADA, but we can't do code compliance with grant money. So, out of that $35,180, $8,600 is ineligible to be considered for match towards the grant. So, that's why if you do some of the grant figures, you'll see that it's a little off and it's because of that $8,600 that's ineligible financing.
Can you say what that ineligible project is?
That, yes, that is the ineligible portion is the egress.
Right, so it would be a stairway coming out.
Right, stairway, yes, to get out off of the second floor. Essentially, that is it. We're in the very beginning stages. We're going to be applying, and that's what this whole process is. After the public hearing, there's going to be a resolution that the council will consider. And at that point in time, that will either allow us to go ahead and move forward in the grant application. And the grants or applications due July 20th, which is coming up, and there's going to be an award of August the 23rd. So, it's kind of rapid that it's all happening, but that's the timeline in a nutshell for this project.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Any questions for Ms. Kane from the council or discussion? Public comment, public questions, support, opposition?
When did that, the grant become available? Did it just become available, or is this like open all year?
No, it's not open all year. There's actually, OKRA does it in rounds, and this is the second round that we're going in for.
And when did it start?
It's in process now. It hasn't, all the applications are due on July 20.
So, there was like no starting date?
No, there's not an official, today's the start date.
So, we did have to get a preliminary application?
Yes, a letter of intent.
Letter of intent, so any committees that haven't submitted a letter of intent can apply for this round?
Right, yeah, we're in about step two of four essentially for that beginning, for the application stage.
And how much is it for the elevator?
We are looking at a total budget for the elevator of $249,740.
And where will it go? Does this, how long?
It would be located in the kitchenette on the first floor and come up there kind of where the doors are, the wall separating the old lines room to the, this area.
And I apologize for my lack of knowledge. I'm not the one writing this grant, however, she is on vacation, so I'm just the villain, so I apologize.
Are there any design schematics or anything of that sort you have, any draft floor plans?
Yes, I know Mark Maddox actually last year had some floor plans completed because we thought we were going to apply last year, but weren't able to. So, there are some floor plans.
Some preliminary, yeah, they're still very preliminary because we won't go into the final until after it's awarded, yeah.
So, the extra set of stairs, I'm sorry, the extra set of stairs, where would that be located?
I believe they have to be attached to the council room based on the size of this room, so I think they would be somewhere, there's that closet area out right there, but somewhere outside the closet heading into the old fire department days. Because we do have a door on the backside of the building. Yes, ma'am.
Do you already have bids for the elevator? How do you know it's going to cost that much?
Those are your engineers' estimates.
Right, engineering estimates.
Who's engineering?
Well, architects, estimates actually, so it's Mark Maddox's estimates. Mark Maddox, the architect on the project.
Is still a built by residents?
Yes.
So, you don't have to get bids for that?
Oh, yeah, that will happen after it's awarded, yes. This is just very preliminary where you've got the preliminary drawings where the estimates come from the architect. And then, obviously, once it's awarded, then we go to full bid after, after final design has been completed.
Any other questions? Any feelings of support or opposition? I know we got a letter from support, a letter of support. I don't know if it'd be helpful to have more members of the public speak up at this time in support, if that would help our application?
It certainly cannot hurt because it, obviously, it's going to be taken in the minutes and we'll be sending that to OKRA as well. Besides being able to show the need, it would be wonderful to be able to have community support.
Is there still a requirement that is a, a, a client for this?
It's been a couple of years since I read it. It was probably in 2016. I don't know if due to our size, like our population, that we don't have to actually meet the ADA, if it's financially not an option. But it's been a while since I read that.
To be able to have the grant allows for that. But having handicap accessible restrooms on every floor and...
I believe we would just put two on the second floor.
Two on the second floor.
On the second floor, is the one downstairs considered handicap accessible?
I can't remember, I don't think so. I think the stool's too far from the wall.
After we're going into his appointment.
Do we have to bid that out?
Yes, yes.
Do we have to have three bids on that?
No, no, it's not like doing a quote. What we do is we do what's called an invitation to bid, just like we normally would, publish it in the newspaper. The architect is going to seek out anybody and everybody that he can. We'll reach out to Otis, we'll reach out to, you know, any other elevator companies that we can to let them know that, hey, we've got this bid going on. So, our hope is to get as many bids as necessary. However, if we only get one bid, we still can't have ways of being able to proceed if that should happen, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions, comments, statements?
Well, I would just like to say that I, I think it's, it's past time that we proceed with this. We've had instances that people certainly needed assistance getting up the stairs, and we've had meetings other locations that were less than ideal. So, you know, if we can be along with this grant, I think it would be very beneficial to the community to be able to access all the people.
Thank you. Any further comment? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing at 7:10 PM. And we'll get to the resolution under new business. I'll move next to minutes from the June 4, 2018 meeting. Commissioner Aldridge, did you have to hand that to this for the public comment section?
No, I changed it.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, I changed it already.
Have they seen the change?
Oh, no, they have not. No, in your comment council minutes, Jane Abbott called me today and had read the minutes and disagreed with how I had presented them in the minutes. She said that it, her question would be, that she proposed that night, if it would be illegal for a short-term rental to be operating before third reading and passage. And that during that discussion, Doug Wagner noted that there was two short-term rentals operating at that time illegally. And Jane asked if the letter would be going to this. So, that is how I changed the minutes to reflect.
Thank you, there, Commissioner. Any other additions, subtractions, deletions, or amendments to be made to this amendment?
Changed her spelling of her name. That's all I changed.
Any additions, subtractions, deletions, or amendments?
I know the minutes be improved as correcting of the June 4 comment council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to the second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Move next to the minutes from the June 27, 2018 special meeting. Any additions, subtractions, deletions, or amendments? Has the council had adequate time to review this?
Hope for approval of the public meeting on June 27.
Second. Motion to the second, is there any further discussion regarding the minutes from the June 27 special meeting? All those in favor? Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Motion carries.
Also haven't had time to read them.
Move next to written oral reports from committees, boards, commissions, and department heads. Chief Mullin, would you like to supplement your reading report?
Only then that the report was finished before the end of the month, and we had an increase of five case reports. And I know we had more citations. I don't have the total number, but there were more than 16. And I think pretty much everything is the same.
Are there any questions for Chief Mullin?
How many miles did you drive, too?
We had 5926 miles on our cars. That was as of Friday.
5926, is that what you're saying?
5926, yes, that's on the report.
Any further questions for Chief Mullin? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Move next to superintendent lines, do you have anything to add to your report?
Do not have anything to add, or anybody had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What, what's the project down at Trailhead Park? I saw some vehicles down there today.
That's the rehab of the suspension bridge, so we're in the process.
Steps or the decking, or just everything that needs it?
Pretty much everything. All the structural supports are pretty good shape, but all the decking, the handrails, it's all sun rot, dry, splintered, so we're going to replace all that. That started these days.
And you're power washing the boardwalk down at Trailhead Park?
Yes, we've been power washing that for, oof, a couple of weeks now. I've had a part-time kid come in. He's been coming in a few hours in the afternoon. He's done with summer school, so today was his first day where he's been here all day, so hopefully within a week or so, we'll have that all power washed up.
Looks good.
Looks a lot different.
Looks a lot better.
Any further questions for superintendent lines? All right, thank you, sir. Superintendent Myers?
The only thing I would like to add to the, to the report was we pumped 28,260,000 gallons last month. Other than that, can anybody have any questions?
How much went to ITC?
Any questions for the superintendent? All right, thanks, sir. Superintendent Vancicle?
Good evening. Just go over a couple of highlights. Yardbury completed the Forest Main project on June 7. And I had him come back in a couple of weeks later and down some, some of the dead trees behind the plant, the ones that we were concerned might fall over the fence or get into the tanks. And I'm happy to announce that we finally got to Cotty Street. It's not completely finished, but the pumps have been installed, the deck was installed, control panel is up, but the power switch has not happened. So, we're still running on the old control panel. I expect it to be done this week, get the switch over, so the new panel would be running the station with both pumps, so. Questions?
Questions for superintendent? Thank you, sir. Brought up my report, the only thing I would add is we sent out some letters today to owners of sidewalks, or owners of betting sidewalks that were in rough shape to ask them if there's interest in the 50-50 match program for the city of Delphi, so we probably sent out, I would say 15 to 25, somewhere around there, of those to try to get some people signed up. I know we had, superintendent lines, know how many people we have signed up so far that have volunteered?
I think I've got four hard commitments and probably a couple more, so we've probably got a half a dozen people that are probably going to be willing to participate.
So, we're working on that. Something else for the owner-occupied rehabilitation, I believe we have two, so we have five or six kind of for this first round of the second phase. We have money for, I don't know, three to five more people, so I sent out some letters. I believe we have two that meet the income requirements, so I'm going to send some more letters out and see if we can get more owner-occupied structures at least applying for the permanent aid. Beyond that, do you guys have any questions for me? Move next to area plan, commissioner Ford, councilman Stewart?
The main thing we dealt with last month was the discussing and having a public hearing on setbacks for the confined animal feeding operations known as CAFOs. That's the main thing we dealt with.
Thank you, councilman. Any questions for the councilman? Move next to committee center report, councilman Shawpe.
As far as I know, we're working on getting the estimate together, finding out exactly what it's going to cost. Found out that the stone that's going to be donated by the quarry, six inches stone for the project. We also found out, councilman Stewart checked with concrete company, and as far as we know right now, we will have about, we have about $12,000 left, the, the concrete, I believe, councilman, wasn't it $24,000?
Twenty, twenty.
Right at that?
Twenty and 21, I think, for the concrete.
Yeah, for the concrete. Anyway, we also have two construction guys that said they would donate their time to help us put in the parking lot if we volunteered to do it. And these are guys that are reputable, and they are local. They are local contractors. One of them is the chief's son, and the other one lives in Camden. So, and he is the gentleman that put the floor in the building, concrete floor in the building. And he said he would donate the machines and stuff where we could excavate and stuff. And of course, I think it'd be proper, Jeff and I talked with Dale, I think it would be proper to pay them at least something for the use of their machinery. What that amount will be, we haven't discussed that yet, but something for the use of their machinery, because after all, it does cost to do that. As far as I know right now, we're waiting on the gas companies to show up. Jeff has called them or emailed them three or four times. I'm assuming that sooner or later, we'll get, we'll get that done. We'd like to get it done so we can button up the office and get that done. They have moved in, the phones are on, thanks to our secretary, treasurer. She makes sure that all the phones are taken care of, but that's where we're at right now, waiting on if the city, whatever they decide, to put in the curb and gutter. If they put in the curb and gutter, then we can get started with the excavating. Hopefully, we'll have enough money to take care of that.
Any questions for councilman Shawpe? Thank you, councilman. All right, we'll move on to old business. First item is proposed ordinance 2018-6, read by title loan, an ordinance creating a handicap parking spot on East Main Street. Is there a motion to pass on third and final reading?
Make the motion to pass.
A second.
As stated.
We have a motion in the second to pass proposed ordinance 2018-6 on third and final reading. Is there any discussion regarding this proposed ordinance? I'll call the president as to his passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move next to proposed ordinance 2018-3 version B, read by title loan, ordinance regarding short-term rentals within the city of Delphi. Deb Sees has requested to come and talk on this matter because she's not here, so I'll open it up to discussion from the council. Is there a motion for passage on second reading of proposed ordinance 2018-3 version B?
Someone.
Second.
Motion to the second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. We'll move next to proposed ordinance 2018-8, read by title loan, ordinance creating a four-way stop at the intersection of Market and Monroe. Is there discussion regarding the information provided? Are there any questions about the information provided? I should have included a number of crashes in the last three years, some language from the Indiana manual on uniform traffic control devices.
I have, according to, I talked to chief, according to the ordinance, a four-way stop sign, the ordinance criteria that those that don't meet are the crash criteria. The one at Market and Monroe, and also the Washington and Monroe. That's the only two things they don't meet. The only thing they don't meet is the, ordinance says that you have to have five accidents in one 12-month period of time. And most of you, if you look it up, you have only two accidents in the last three years in both of those sections, according to what the chief has printed out for us. So, and I don't need to be putting on any bad vibes or anything, but you can't do something without meeting the criteria.
So, the Indiana manual on uniform traffic control devices provides the criteria for stop sign applications.
Yes.
It's important to note, I believe that, I think they use the word "should" instead of "shall." I know it's a minor distinction, but within that manual, there are provisions that require a "shall," so you have to meet these criteria. In this application, it just says it should meet this criteria, and we don't meet, I mean, we don't meet the number of cars traveling the major direction, the minor direction. I don't believe we meet the number of crashes. The big thing here is a criteria that could be considered as locations where a road user, after stopping, cannot see conflicting traffic and is not able to negotiate the intersection unless conflicting cross-traffic is also required to stop. So, that would be, visual clearance really is the only thing that, the other criteria that we would meet is this intersection.
Well, I've been going by both intersections the last two weeks, and I haven't had any trouble going by the bank or going by the, going onto Market Street. The only problem I have is, like I told the chief, people are starting to turn their vehicles back around the way they're not supposed to, but I don't want to see it become a city of stop signs, like Kokomo is, a stoplight. If you're emergency, I could see that, but I can't see an emergency on both of those stop signs. That's my own personal opinion.
Do you travel on Monroe, on those intersections?
Yes, I have. I have, I travel a lot on those roads.
It's pretty bad. Yeah, we haven't had, unfortunately, we haven't, but I've had, it's in my district, and I've had a lot of complaints about it. I personally drive it every morning going to work, and I think it's a hazard. I believe it's hard to see if anybody's coming when the banks got people parked out there. You can't see people coming down Washington. If you're over on, on the other street coming down Market, that Market we're talking about from the old RMC, if all them cars are parked there, you can't see it. I, I think in, in my mind, it's better to be proactive than reactive. Why wait till we meet five wrecks? Why not do something before it turns into a bad wreck, somebody gets teep over there and...
Thank you, councilman. Any further discussion? So, if the council wishes to proceed, and I know the ordinance just states the intersection of Market and Monroe, the council wishes to proceed today, we can pass this on first reading and present an amendment next month if the council also wishes to include the intersections of Monroe and Washington Street. So, this could proceed today and then be amended next month if you wanted to include that second intersection.
I look at it as the fact that when we pass ordinances, it's, it's the way I look at it anyway, we should be trying to stop the problem. I don't see a problem with that intersection. It's been that way for years. You don't have the figures, you don't have the numbers to justify the, the change, and I think you, you'll get into a habit where you'll get into a situation, I feel, where those intersections have been the same for dozens and dozens of years, and then you all of a sudden change it. You're going to have people not seeing that. They're going to run that stop sign that you're going to put up, and the cross-traffic is going to be expecting them to stop, and then when they don't, I think that's, that's when you're going to have problems with the accidents.
Thank you, councilman. Is there any further discussion regards, regarding this proposed ordinance? It's just first reading, but I'd rather wait till the end of the...
What does our street superintendent think?
Well, I don't have an opinion on it really, other than I'm looking at the logistical aspect of it. I'm not how, I'm not 100% sure how we'd get that stop sign in a spot that could be seen. I hate to say it, but you're looking at probably a bump out on Market Street because of the angle parking. I don't know how, if I set the stop sign back in the greenway, no one's going to see that stop sign above cars. So, that's my only concern is if you wish to make that a four-way stop, it's not so bad coming southbound on Market, but the northbound traffic because of the angle parking, either we have to probably maybe do away with a couple of spots, or somehow we have to get that stop sign out towards the tail end of the vehicle so that that stop sign can be seen. Because if we set it back in the greenway, which is only three feet wide currently, they're going to come flying through there with parked cars, and they're never going to see a stop sign. So, I'm not quite sure there's, there's, you can do some pavement markings, you can do your stop ahead, I don't know how...
Can we even stop ahead on?
Yeah.
It's still going to be off the greenway?
Correct, the stop sign's going to be, so food for thought. I'm not quite sure how I'd get a stop sign. Like I said, southbound, not so bad, northbound's, that's, that's the problem.
Washington Street?
Washington Street's kind of got a bump out there, that wouldn't be quite as bad. I'd have to look at that again, see if we could somehow incorporate a stop sign within that little green area, that little bump out area. Washington Street's kind of got a bump out there. That wouldn't be quite as bad. I'd have to look at that again, see if we could somehow incorporate a stop sign within that little green area, that little bump out area.
Did you say we're not allowed to ask questions? It's just a follow-up question on what, I just was curious what you found out about from the railroad tracks to that intersection.
Engineer said it was fine. I should have.
Engineer Fern said, from a quick look, I'm not aware of any situation that would restrict the placement of a stop sign at that location due to the railroad crossing. There should be sufficient storage for vehicles between the tracks and Monroe Street. They may consider adding a "do not stop on tracks" sign if they're already using it. Any further discussion from the council?
Seeing as our street commissioner bought it, it's a good, good thing to think of that. Even though I think it's a dangerous intersection, I agree that maybe we should just have to study it a little more and see. So I don't, I don't think we're going to get the votes anyway, so.
Is there any more information that you would like, when we study it a little bit more?
He's got the best point, because that's the problem you have turning there, is all those vehicles out, which would shield the stop sign. I agree with that. That's the problem, is you have a van or trucks there, you cannot see because of the parking. So that's something we, I agree, we have to give more thought to. I mean, Aaron's right, I think that's a problem.
Any further discussion from the council? Any motions? Won't consider giving their, no vote on it, but we can study it and bring it up again as we may desire. We'll move next to proposed resolution 2018-19, read by title alone, resolution initiating a zoning change for parcels at the intersection of Ruffing Avenue and Washington Street. What this resolution does would allow the area plan commission to initiate a zoning change. This can be done without going through the city council, however, there is a fee associated with going through the area plan commission requesting a rezone. While I don't think it's proper in every case for the city council to initiate this, I believe in this particular case it is. Mr. Price, I believe you're buying, or the contract purchaser of the, was Wilcox Lumber Yard?
It was Metzger.
Metzger Lumber Yard. And the property was used as a lumberyard. It's been used for commercial or industrial purposes for as long as a lot of people can remember. I don't know the last time it was used as residential, however, it is zoned residential. I can't remember if that you want or you to.
Yeah, that, that backs up to a red damn tree. The old interstate, but it's, but it's zoned, you want that.
Right, so.
And what are we wanting to change it to?
What this would do would allow the area plan commission to talk with Mr. Price, identify what businesses could be going in there to make sure it meets all the needs. So whether it would be zoned industrial or commercial, or one of those categories, depending on what tenants, property owner may have there in the future. So it gives some discretion to the area plan commission.